It is six o'clock. I will call the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have Reverend Paul Hicks from the Saint John's Episcopal Church to provide the invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am the English guest and fellow citizen of With County. It's my honor to be here. My name is Paul Hicks. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for the many blessings you bestowed on this county community. We ask you to help us be good stewards or such, send down upon these individuals who hold the esteemed offices here in this county, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may exercise their administrative authority faithfully to promote the well-being of all our citizens. And finally, teach your people to rely on your strength, to accept their responsibilities to the favor of citizens, that we may serve you faithfully in our generation and honor your holy name through Jesus Christ our Lord.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on the agenda is citizens' time. I'll call you up as always. You have three minutes. The first person we have signed up is Ms. Linda Myers.
That's my name again. And we have trash everywhere, and it's very, very unappealing. Um, I recently read an article from Pulaski County. They had a one-bag challenge. And I was just wondering if we somehow could start a one-bag challenge here in With County with the Chamber of Commerce, perhaps our mayor, and With County representatives and so on, and put orange bags out, put them at the library, and people can take one. And perhaps some- somebody could start a Facebook page and post what they've done out there, how many bags they've collected, and so on and so forth. Um, the convicts do a really good job, but there's only so much they can do. And there is litter absolutely everywhere, and it's just really, really unfortunate. So if we could involve some other organizations, perhaps the library, um, businesses that even might want to keep them and hand them out, orange bags, I'm sure we can get from VDOT, they would help, and so on, and call it a one- With County One-Bag Challenge. Think about it. It would be a good possibility. The other thing is also, uh, recently, or last week, uh, the state of Florida removed ERIT, which is the electronic registration information center, center software. And that is about voting. That was one of the big things about voter fraud in past several elections, to get rid of that software. And it would be to Virginia's benefit if we could encourage, or if you would help encourage, all our representatives to get rid of ERIT and get back to, uh, a little bit more normalcy and maybe, um, not to have so much fraud in our elections. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Next person we have signed up is Mr. Gary Blevins. Mr. Blevins?
Well, my report for this reporting period is much improved from the last one. March first, two thousand twenty-three, at 11:00 PM, my LED lights were misfired. And also on NBC and Avenue, the government has an explanation for individuals sent on, which stated it wasn't an act of the form power, but rather by a middle power. This makes sense because one would asleep here or home to get sunburned, thus being a roundabout change called the sunburn. On March third, two thousand twenty-three, on TV and headphones were misfired to plan to reset the default settings on the TV to once again entertain normal operation television. March fourth, two thousand twenty-three, on TV, my LED lights were flickered. While flickering the lights, you can change the lights better than above from seventy-nine years to just a few months. Rodney, Mike Edsner, and Scott Kelly have provided me a lot of information themselves, and I had no idea ever this. I would never imagine that you could get your names in every sentence in the old days. Years until Rodney moved in twenty-fourteen, with God's great foster children, and personally, we were stranded in the night. Since these activities have been going on for almost twenty years, this time they've escaped, and they may have come into man. And when we turned out, we're displaying that nine-point-one attack on the World Trade Trains in New York. Surely, I can best understand that attack. This long day for enforcement action brought a terrorist to that state, backed on my third touch. You know, we're a forgotten country, but on their security, formerly then a business, Kevin Little, Clark. The burgers holding in a bag would replace it in a box, and by my turn, together, federal departments and agents. He played in a bad Kevin, ladies. Despite many poor challenges, no federal force, the government constitutional need to play the active visions accomplishes the new. He said you truly need to play the act which conducted mass about a municipal market since started on May third, two thousand fifteen. On June second, two thousand fifteen, this five parts of law included section two fifteen, reported that restored and renewed for two nineteen with a wayback. Officers then held security acts, started a new state of mind, or in line with the act, since you found paper to act the way to that. Blinds the girl, by the military staff, to replace the back, at least being left beyond one of state's post job. Blinds the federal force, said the man was shot with a fence in recent manner. These are just a few of the precious stars asking what the government has made of things so they come back. I wonder if he'd long there would complain because outcomes when he was planning to attack him, think that if he did, it showed a brilliant plan, and that worked perfectly. Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. That's all the citizens we have signed up for citizens' time, so I'll close citizens' time. Moving on with our agenda. We're honored to present a sports resolution to Mr. Joseph Cuckett from the George West High School Swim Team. Mr. Cuckett, if you would, come forward. Mr. Cook will present the resolution.
With County Resolution forty-three also was released in honoring Joseph Cuckett of Northland High School, twenty-three. Whereas Northland High School junior Joseph Cuckett was slated to be a consistent twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, since Wednesday. And whereas Joseph played first in the two-hundred-yard freestyle from a hundred-yard backstroke at the Regency Meeting on February ninth, twenty-twenty-three. And whereas Joseph advanced to the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Virginia High School League State Class One and Two Swim and Dive Championships in Princeton, Virginia on February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. And whereas Joseph captured the two-hundred-yard freestyle championship title with a time of one minute fifty-two minutes forty-five of the five-zero. And was runner-up in the hundred-yard, or backstroke with a time of one minute fifty-five seconds. And whereas the With County Board of Supervisors, Christmas, and then Joseph, for the straight perseverance to this day, to the excellence for which we all should strive. Now therefore, to give results, the With County Board of Supervisors presents this resolution, Joseph Cuckett, in recognition of his twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three swimming team's state championship title, and being qualified and a copy of this resolution will be incorporated into the official news of the With County Board of Supervisors, adopted this fourteenth of May and March, twenty-twenty-three, signed by Ryan W. Walsh, Chair.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'd like to make that motion, please.
Have a motion by Mr. Lawson. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Congratulations.
Do we want the coach on the picture?
We'll get him on the next one.
Coach slash dad. Congratulations. Congrats.
And Joseph, just to let you know, we give those out every year, sir. Uh, if you want to be like Tatum Robinson and decorate your bedroom with them, just keep winning. Yes, good luck. And thank you, mom and dad, and coach.
That was, uh, I just wanted to thank the people. Uh, thank you so much for, uh, the privilege to be able to be here. Support, ask support the team. Uh, except for, uh, several amazing successes this year. Uh, all the high schools, the representative states, uh, uh, very proud, especially with both, obviously, Melissa. But, uh, with Justin and several others, the team, nine kids can work with high school, uh, fifty, so nine kids. Uh, if you can just make the possible, the worst.
Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is we've got several public hearings. The first one is the Bentwood Drive Transportation Service District hearing. And I'll read the public hearing notice. The With County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three at six PM or as soon thereafter. It's practical in the Board of Supervisors' meeting room, three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. The public hearing is open to comment on an ordinance establishing the Bentwood Drive Transportation Service District and the Lead Mines District. The property owners have petitioned the county to create the service district in order to establish approximately eight tenths of a mile of Bentwood Drive as a paved public secondary road. The district would be created on an equal share basis, with each petitioner responsible for one seventeenth of all annual costs related to construction, utility relocation, and administrative costs of the district. Half of the construction cost would be paid by the Virginia Department of Transportation Local Assistance Revenue Sharing Funds. Public may comment in person at the public hearing or submit written responses to County Clerk Martha Collins at the address above or at her email. With that, I'll open the public hearing. We don't have anybody signed up to speak on the Bentwood Drive Transportation Service District, so I'll close the public hearing portion. Mr. Barrett, do you have anything to add to that?
Ms. Shelton has worked on this. Mr. Hankins has helped her with this. Um, I appreciate their work on it. With the petition being signed and no comments being heard, I do not know any reason why not to go ahead and proceed with the enactment of this ordinance.
All right, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to enact the ordinance as presented. Someone have a motion by Mr. Burnet. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Burnet. So approved. If you give me just a second to find. And our next one is public hearing notice for amendment number one to ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash four, the Service District for Staff Street area of With County, Virginia. The With County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three at six PM or assume thereafter as practical in the Board of Supervisors' meeting room, three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. The public hearing is to hear public comments concerning amendment number one to ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash four entitled Service District for Staff Street area of With County, Virginia. A copy of the proposed amendments may be found online at www.withco.org or at the county administration offices, three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. The public may comment in person at the public hearing or submit written responses to County Clerk Martha Collins at the address above or at her email that is given. With that being said, I will open the public comment period of the Staff Street Transportation Service District. And again, we do not have anybody signed up, and I'll be not know that we received any additional written comments, Mr. Barrett. With that being said, I'll close the public comment period. And do you have anything to add to that? I know we discussed it before.
Yeah, I, I, I will just add, um, as y'all are aware, the, uh, the, the district was originally created at a dollar and forty-eight cent tax rate. I laid a spreadsheet in front of you just, just for reference if there was any questions came up tonight. But basically, um, during the reassessment, um, several properties changed value dramatically apart by, uh, new construction and renovation work that were done with them. And this had a huge impact on the estimated, uh, districts. Mr. Crowgy, who unfortunately could not be here tonight, his attorney is here if there's any question. And Mr. Crowgy, uh, met with me, uh, and sent me several letters wishing to revise this district. We received a revised petition signed by the landowners to change this to a flat rate. Uh, and that is the nine forty-five ninety-one that you see in the next to the last column. Um, this year's rate, as seen in the ordinance, is actually a little less than the nine forty-five ninety-one. It's nine thirty-eight thirteen. Um, and, uh, Mr. Crowgy, uh, as representative of the Land Mines Estates will actually be paying all the taxes on that district for the first year. So, uh, with that, sir, I would, uh, recommend juror's approval of amendment number one to the Staff Street Transportation Service District.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve amendment number one to the Staff Street Service District ordinance. Same move. Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on this one? Hearing now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry. So approved. All right, our next public hearing is a right-of-way abandon for Stones Throw Lane, Austonsville, in compliance with sections fifteen point two dash two thousand and six, fifteen point two dash twenty-two seventy-two, and fifteen point two dash twenty-two oh four of the Code of Virginia's amendment. The With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance vacating a portion of the Stones Throw Lane fifty feet wide right-of-way through Lot Nine in the J M Grayson subdivision located in Austonsville. The Board of Supervisors will hear comments from citizens concerning adoption of the pro-proposed ordinance. The public hearing will be held March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three at six PM in the boardroom of the With County Board of Supervisors, three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. The public may comment in person at the public hearing or submit written responses to County Clerk Martha Collins at the address above or by her email address. All right, I will open the public comment period, and we have one person signed up, Mr. Keith Cook. You'll come forward. Since it is a public hearing, you do have five minutes, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name's Keith Cook. I'm actually one of the owners of the property there, uh, online. The, uh, the width grid comes down, it doglegs back across my property. At one point, it's my understanding, they used to be a complete circle. The one from Austonville rode around together. There's been all those lots, or the majority of those lots have, have already vacated. It's a fifty-foot lot right-of-way. It's a little ranch. So, uh, by across my property, I think it's about a hundred and seventy feet. So basically, it's a hundred and seventy feet by, by fifty. But I'd like to have access to what, what he views. Um, my knowledge is not jamming anyone up. I heard people. A few months ago, I reached out to Mr. Hankins, if he was good enough to come down and have a look at it. And, uh, so that was how we kind of processed from there. Uh, I spoke to my next door neighbor, Mr. Wells, and, uh, he's understanding what we all know. I guess at this point, does anyone have any questions? Is there anything I can answer?
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Cook, and then Wes?
I don't.
I think there's a whole lot more I can say. It takes us five minutes. I thank you all very much. If you have any questions, please on this tape, reach out to me. Thank you. Thanks so much for my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. All right, that's all we have signed up for the public comment period, so I'll close the public comment. Mr. Barrett, do you have anything, or Mr. Hankins, either one?
I, I forwarded pictures of the, uh, right-of-way today. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to see those, uh, in your email. Uh, Mr. Cook sent those. Uh, it, it's a pretty straightforward paper alley abandonment. Um, there, there's no good reason to, to keep it. Uh, there are a couple of conditions included in the ordinance, um, you know, with, with Mr. Cook bear the, the cost of the public hearing and, and advertisement, and that he, uh, bear the cost of the survey uh, for resur surveying the property and combining everything into one lot, as that right-of-way is abandoned, if that's, uh, what you would like to do.
All right, with that being said, I'll close the public hearing. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the right-of-way bandit abandonment. Abandonment, I'm sorry, so moved as presented, and that would include, um, as Mr. Hankins said, uh, I guess with them our abandonment policy, that Mr. Cook will take care of those decisions, call. I'm sorry, Mr. Hornet.
Did you make that?
Do you want me to make a motion again?
All right, I'd have a motion by Mr. Hornet. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Hearing now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Burnett. So approved. Congratulations, Mr. Cook. You got more to mo. All right, move on to our final public hearing, amendment number one to With County ordinance, or With County subdivision ordinance number twenty-twelve dash five. The With County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three at six PM or as soon thereafter as practical in the Board of Supervisors' meeting room, three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. The public hearing is to hear public comment concerning amendment number one to ordinance twenty-twelve dash five entitled subdivision ordinance of With County, Virginia. A co- a copy of the proposed ordinance, or proposed amendment may be found online at www.withco.org or at the county administration offices, three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. Public may comment in person at the public hearing or submit written responses to Clerk, County Clerk Martha Collins at the address above or at her email that's provided. That being said, there's nobody signed up to speak at the public hearing, so I'll call or close the public hearing portion. Mr. Barrett, do you have anything to add to that?
I think Mr. Burnett brought this up, um, a couple meetings ago. This is basically a request Ms. Shelton brought to our attention when someone contacted her that the old, um, the requirements required placing a phone number. And of course, most people don't have home phone numbers anymore, and it's put their cell phone on it. This just revises the ordinance that they no longer have to put the cell phone number.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendment number one to twenty-twelve dash five. Same move. Second. Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion? I will say whoever discovered that, whoever thought of that, thank you, because we get enough phone calls if you're on land, so. All right, hearing, anybody else have anything? All right, hearing now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
So approved. Ms. Shelton set the record for the number of public hearings associated with one department.
He's been busy.
Don't do that again in six months. All right, next item on our agenda is paying the invoices. Each board member has received in the board package a copy of the invoices. I'll entertain a motion to pay the invoices. Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any invoice any board member wants to pull out and or discuss? Hearing none, we'll do a, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Burnett. So approved. Next item is our minutes from our previous meeting from February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions, discussion, or corrections to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I will abstain since I was not here.
All right. Still passing. All right, move on to old business. We have some appointments. Mr. Barrett?
Don't believe there's any on your agenda. I do believe we were still looking for a Mount Rogers Community Services appointment. I believe you may have referenced one you were working on.
Yeah, I know, um, I talked to, uh, Brian Borer, um, about it. I didn't realize at the time, and he, he was interested, but I didn't realize at the time that, uh, Mount Rogers Community Services Board had created the advisory board position, and, and Joey Hash from the Police Department, is that person, so I'm not sure if, um, we want somebody else in law enforcement, or, I mean, it's, um, I know we received, uh, um, application, um, today from Elaine Humane Kane. She'd be interested in, in serving on it. So I don't know. I would, uh, I would request you keep that on old business and look at it for the next move. All right, next item is the With Land Foundation Grant, and Mr. Hankins is outside, so.
Want to come back to that.
Do you have anything else under old business?
I am not aware of anything else under old business, Chairman.
So we'll skip the With Land Foundation Grant till Mr. Hankins comes back. We'll move into old business. We have a revenue sharing amendment resolution through.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there are three, uh, resolutions for revenue sharing. We adopted three resolutions back in two thousand and nineteen, I believe it was. Uh, they incorrectly referenced transportation, transportation, Virginia Department of Transportation physical year twenty-twenty-one instead of twenty-one twenty-two. So basically, VDOT is requesting that we re-adopt the ordinances for all three of these projects, so, um, that's Pinewood, Orion, and Bentwood. That's the three that we're doing. So I would request that you all adopt the amendments for each of these, or adopt the resolution for each of these.
We have to do them all separate when we just got one motion?
I don't know. I don't have any reason why they could do them as one motion.
I'll make that motion. All right, have a motion to adopt the revenue sharing resolutions as presented by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on those items? Hearing now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Burnett. So approved. Next item is our resolution supporting grant application for the Smith-With Airport Commission.
Mr. Chairman, last week I met with, uh, County Administrator for Smith County, the town manager of Withfield, the town manager for Marion, Withfield and Marion. And, uh, we met reviewing the, uh, budget, uh, that the Smith-With Airport Commission had put in. But at the same time, we discussed that, um, the airport wanted to look at applying, um, for a community project funding request. And what this is, is the first phase, and this is to grade and, um, pro- provide a taxiway to what they're calling the East, East End Hangar Project, East Runway Hangar Project, whatever. The goal is to get a, uh, this taxiway built over and then apply under another round of funding in the future to actually build the T hangars. And the T hangars would actually be able to provide them a, uh, revenue source for rental income in the future, and there's been a request to do such. The, um, the amount that they are looking at, uh, requesting is, or the whole project cost is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, the proposal is that would still be under the same, uh, ninety percent federal, eight percent state, and a local two percent, which will be split between all the localities. In order to, uh, put this proposal in, they needed supporting resolutions from, from localities and, and from their partners. I would request, uh, the board's approval of, uh, this app, of this resolution for them to apply for the funding.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash zero six.
Same move.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Uh.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is with County Sheriff's Office, D C J S, ARPA grants and anticipation.
Yes, uh, there's a memo behind my memo from uh, Chief Deputy Klein. Basically, they have got a, a word, I guess approval from D C J S for ARPA funds that they need to make application for, and then they will be awarded these funds. Um, I've got a memo there that shows the, the uh, decision matrix, and it shows that with county is to get three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, I would request uh, as Chief Deputy Klein has requested, that we go ahead and amend and appropriate our budget for that amount. And once the funds are received and we accept that grant, he can go ahead and begin issuing purchase orders immediately. His goal is to get ahead of every other um, county that's going to be trying to do that as well. So I would request the amending of the revenue and expense budget as shown on my memo.
Right, I'll entertain a motion to amend and appropriate um, the budget as referenced to Mr. Barrett's memo.
And that's three hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
All right, have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on that? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Uh.
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 Abstaining.
Uh.
Uh.
So approved. You have anything else under new business, Mr. Barrett?
Um, Mr. Hankins has handed out a memo to you. Um, I know he's out here right now, but basically um, the uh, the um, behind this you have a memo or from a letter from C L J Engineering uh, based on their response for the Apex Center. Uh, reculting cost proposal, the bid being greater than the original cost estimate. Um, C J L recommends that the county reject uh, the bid proposal. Uh, Mr. Hankins and I have already met with the uh, engineers, uh, have come up with some other options that they are working on revising plans to go out with a different bid package to uh, bring this in within budgetary reason.
All right, entertain a motion to reject the bid received on the Apex project. So you have a motion by Mr. Burnett with you. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on? All right, hearing that we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Uh.
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 Uh. Uh.
So approved. Anything else under new business?
No, sir, that's all I have.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything on the new business?
Um, not that I'm worried of, but I'm still kissing.
Well, the meat was moving like very quickly while you were outside. I'm not paying fingers.
You, you, you are free to kick me out of your, your league, Mr. Chairman. Thanks.
All right, we'll go back to old business. We have the Withland Foundation Grant. I believe that was uh, yours, Mr. Hankins?
Yes, sir. Um, so we um, have um, you, you, you've allotted um, us the ability to do phase one of the Asia Park uh, playground. Um, approximately cost of three hundred and twelve thousand dollars plus about eighteen thousand dollars for demolition, transportation, and disposal of the old equipment. Um, so about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars total. We have uh, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars that you've agreed to use uh, from federal funds that we've received um, for this project. That leaves a gap of about fifty thousand. Uh, we can either fund that from county reserves or um, we still have on the table the ability to accept the fifty thousand dollars offered by the Withland Foundation. Elizabeth and I have had some good conversations with the foundation. Um, um, that they have encouraged us to apply for additional funds for phase two. Um, I would, would ask that you consider accepting the fifty thousand dollar uh, grant and authorize us to apply for additional funds uh, for the second phase as they open up the uh, twenty twenty-three grant cycle. But I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins? Mr. I recall, we wondered if something in there about we had that fifty was only good if we spent four hundred and fifty?
We, that's part of the conversation we've had uh, with, with Land Foundation. They're glad to see this project moving forward, and uh, they are making the fifty thousand available based on our current pricing.
Okay.
There were some other requirements as well, right? Uh, there were, and uh, the foundation has indicated that we can uh, cross out any language that we disagree with, and they'll consider that uh, we'll, we'll work through that. Um, we, we're not asking you to authorize us to sign as is. Uh, one of the concerns um, that, that they addressed, uh, uh, there, there's some language in there about the real estate. If, if you stop using it, uh, then after the real estate, all they would want if we were to stop using it would be the equipment uh, that they, they paid for. Um, that, that's very, very unlikely to happen. But um, I'll, I'll leave it at that. What, so that they paid for? Yes. A hundred and fifty thousand will pay you for all the equipment? Yeah, it will not.
And, and I guess that would be my question. Have you provide that up and, and not to, not to, to nitpick a contract, but in the not so um, recent past, um, we've had buyers who were on some contracts that we've been um, with some software companies, and I guess that just makes me hyper bitchness.
I understand. I- if you'd like for us to bring contract language back to you at your next meeting, we can negotiate with the uh, with the foundation over the next uh, week or so and, and bring that back to you for further review of it. Uh, makes it more palatable.
I mean, I, I trust your instinct on that, so. That's my opinion. It doesn't, I mean, it's whatever the board's wishes are, it doesn't.
Well, and, and you know, I've said this in the, in the budget committee meeting, but you know, we're looking at a five hundred some thousand dollar project, and, and even if they give us another fifty thousand in the next round of grant funding, you know, that's less than ten percent that they put toward this project. And you know, with even states, you know, they, they want their logo included in, in any publication mark being fresh release. And I mean, I just don't think uh, ten percent match, darn it, that type of endorsement. That's my personal opinion too.
I mean, I think everybody knows how I feel about it, so.
Yeah.
And I'm in the same place, Mr. Chairman.
I agree with that opinion, but at the same time, that's fifty, maybe a hundred thousand toward the project. So definitely if they can mark out some of that, you know, some of those requirements of verbiage, I'm all for it.
Yeah, and I trust, I trust your decision, Mr. Hankins. And I figure you, you know, you know how we feel about some of the language that's in there, and you'll make sure it's right for us. And I trust that.
Yeah, cause with, with the way products are arriving, I don't know, we can meet at September deadline, having the project completed by September.
The uh, the company is still saying it, it's probably a ten or twelve week, you know, once we've completed everything. Um, you know, we, we've got to do the requisitions on our side, but um, you know, ten or twelve weeks, I think is pretty reasonable. Uh, there, there's, are American made, so they're easier to source than, than some folks are.
So what's the, what's the player here? The board, do you want to take action or, or wait till we get an updated contract? I'll make a motion. We go with Mr. Hank. All right, have a motion by Mr. Cook to assume.
Accept the fifty thousand.
See.
And authorize staff to negotiate the contract? Is that, so what you're saying, Mr. Cook?
All right, have a motion by Mr. Cook. I have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any more discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Uh.
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 No.
Oh.
Uh.
No.
So approved. Is there anything, do you have anything else under old business?
No, sir.
All right, move on to board reports. We have the budget committee.
Budget uh, committee met on March eighth, two thousand twenty-three and recommends to follow to amend and appropriate a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five eighty-two at local max for the C S A supply allocation request.
All right, coming from the committee, doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that? In case anybody forgot, that is on the C S A fund from D S S that's um,
Not a lot of choice. Children's services like this. And, and they did come, I did request them kind, that they would come to the budget committee, and they did, just to go over where they were for the year, and, and they hope this covers it. They don't know for certain that it will. But this meets, they need this fund to uh, to finish out their expenses that they're anticipating for the year.
All right. Again, anybody have any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Uh.
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 So approved.
Mr. Chairman, before he reads the next one, you, you sure you want him to read this one? No, no, you go right ahead. We were picking on you for not being here for this one.
Yeah. So you ready?
We're ready.
All right.
This is a good one.
To accept the American Rescue Plan Act grant in the amount of six hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for the Fort Chiswell sewer extension project.
All right, coming from budget committee, doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that?
I would just bring up, we had talked earlier this year, we had uh, we were looking at this project. We've got engineers already working on this project. We became aware of this D E Q ARPA funds. Uh, the engineers reviewed it, felt like if we put in the applications for around this amount, that we had a very good chance of being funded. They were correct, so that, that gives us grant money towards roughly half or so of this project, and that is very good news and helps us along on that project. So, and you were unable to in our budget committee meeting, so uh, we, we debated whether to proceed with it or not, so.
Mr. Fowler, just uh, rules of procedure question, just because I voted for something to give down the committee, I can still vote against the board member. All right, moving on, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Burnett?
Uh.
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 So approved.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Move on to board supervisors time. Mr. Terry?
Nothing to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Horni?
I have a couple of things. Uh, first, I want to thank y'all for your vote last time on the bridge thing that I missed. I appreciate that, and I know the citizens do. I hope they.
And we did explain why you were out here.
I understand that. I tried to watch the video, and I never could get the video pulled up to watch it, but I did read the bits for whatever good that does, but anyway. Uh, second thing was, I had a farmer bring up to me the tax tickets. He thought that our old tax tickets had on it that your, whether or not your land was in farm use, but I pulled up some of my old tickets, I mean, there wasn't, I think it was two thousand and twenty tickets, and I didn't see it on yet. But is there any way that we can simplify that to put it on there so farmers can know that there are still in land use? Maybe? I mean, that's something I guess we'll ask Lori over.
Yeah, we'll check and see. Don't know.
And the second one, I think you've already had a call on was Amanda Brewer Lord Smith, or Smith Lord, however, whatever name her is, she is now, the K boy in her front yard, has is anything going on with the fiber optics that we know of?
I, I have asked them for an update on that. I, I don't have one yet. Um, I, I, I will email you or call you as soon as I have an update on that.
All right, I appreciate that. She just called me and was complaining about it, asked if I would bring it up since she might not get here. So I figured with her being a brewery, it's probably a better thing she did.
And actually, I spoke to Ms., uh, her mother, Ms. Brewer, who contacted me, so yes.
And I believe that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Horni. Mr. Smith?
I got a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Hankins, any more movement on the part-time payup in the Eastern EMS coverage? I'm uh, working on something to bring to you all uh, very soon. Uh, should have it by the next meeting. Um, we do have a normal uh, fire and rescue committee meeting. Um, I need to verify that everybody can come because it's next week, and we're already pretty busy next week. Um, uh, but I need you all to, I need the committee members to make a recommendation on that. All right, thanks, sir. Um, and I'll send an email. I'll send Mr. Fowler, if you can let Mr. Fowler know the case of the, from the red lights there at the exit eighty going south toward the high school to the north entrance of Western Falls. Uh, that road's beat up pretty bad with potholes through that area. We can get them to look at it. And then last thing I got, I, I do want to send uh, my appreciation and thanks to Mr. Fowler, his, his team uh, for their quick response on the guardrail issues and progress part. So uh, they was out putting new guardrail up in the rain last Friday, so uh, I come in there and I go back. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Just one question, Mr. Hankins, it doesn't matter for the committee to consider, obviously you're going to be in budget committee meetings all day next Monday. I don't know if you want to hang around for fire and rescue afterwards, or if you want to have it the week afterwards, or if you need something definitely, which will be handing out something at twenty-eighth meeting, however you want to proceed. But just keep that in mind this week if you're finalizing that schedule.
And, and we may have some, some empty time in our budget discussions. Um, some of the fire and rescue folks haven't confirmed their times yet, so we may have some time to discuss it in, in general, because it, it, it does relate to the budget. So, okay, it would be a good time to do it, I think.
All right, Mr. Cook. Cox train.
Paperwork has been served. I do not recall the court date off the top of my head. I will check that and get that back to you.
That's all I have. You give me a second, I'll tell you. The twentieth of this month, so Monday.
Yes, sir.
All right, Ms. Lawson?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Burnett? I had a phone call um, from some people out on Grandview Drive um, off of Don'ta Road, and I sent the information to Mr. Barrett that they're looking to do some sort of sharing, get their real estate number. And I sent all the information to Barrett. And that's all I have. All right. Um, the only thing I have is uh, last Thursday, um, the go tech presentation. Um, I know some of you had other engagements to make with uh, Mr. Barrett, Mr. Hankins, myself, and Mr. Cook. Um, and if, if you get a chance to, to go by and see that program, I think everybody at the bar agrees that it's very impressive. Um, we had people from W C C here, um, on the workforce development side, but um, that really is just an amazing program that incorporates mechanical engineers, agri-science, uh, health sciences, and um, I, I'm really happy to see it expand in next year in the Fort Chiswell Middle School, and then once Scott projects completed, we'll be in that middle school. And um, it, it really, some of the stuff that's yet to be robotics and, and mechanical engineering stuff is, is way above the level I was when I was in middle school, and that's not saying much, I know, but it really was, it re- it really was impressive presentation. So.
Three D printers, laser printers, robotics.
Robotics. You know, the, the one thing that got me was the, the little tabletop, and I can't go bot, so bot.
Yeah.
It um, it was a miniature version. Yes, they would, it, um, it was a miniature version of the machine that they had. At the, um. Musters pellet place, um.
Yeah, the pallet cycle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, reminds me of your old gatorade, that takes the bottles off the end of it, puts them on the pallet, like thing, robotic, etc. It, uh, I mean, it was just a little bird, you know, these middle school kids learning how to operate it. Um, you don't have to worry about me ever getting off of the job to operate any robot. After about ten minutes, it's not a problem.
You get broken. Tell him, you get broken.
I did break it, but they assured me that it was meant to be around middle school kids, and it was meant to be broken, so. It snapped together, but, uh, I don't think once gatorade, that's a giving, so. But that's all I have, but thank y'all for attending, um, before we, and, and I don't know, since it's so early in the hour. Um, do y'all want to look at, have a closed session to talk about personnel, murders, and many, when everybody do?
Do we need to? Are there something, um?
Unless you all see a need to?
Yeah, I didn't know if anybody, I talked to Mister Hankins, I just didn't know anything about it.
I don't.
And during our budget work sessions, just in general, we'll probably have some closed sessions on some personnel issues as well, and that, but still. Other than that, I don't have anything else for the agenda.
Mister Bear, do you have anything else to come for the board?
No, sir, I do not, um, for the board, for the, this meeting, uh, we do have our budget presentations on next week. We, uh, appreciate Ms. Collins, and then we will be looking at some food and some snacks and things, if there's anything in particular that you all would like. Or special dietary restrictions, uh, certainly pass it along and let us know.
Mister Hankins, do you have anything?
No, sir.
I felt like it was the Jacob Farthing pointing toward me.
I, I wasn't looking at anyone in particular, so.
Mister Farthing, do you have anything? Ms. Collins, do you have anything? All right, well, nothing else to come before the board, we'll be in recess until Monday, March twentieth, twenty twenty three at eight thirty AM.